That said, I will call this meeting to order. This is the regular monthly meeting of the Holiday Island Suburban Improvement District Board of Commissioners. Today's date is Monday, October 18th, and the time is 9:00 AM. We'll begin today's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Secretary Brown, did you call the board?
Yes, sir. Chairman Dyers?
Here.
Commissioner Childers?
Here.
Commissioner Kellison?
Here.
Commissioner Stamps?
Here.
Commissioner Brown? Here.
I declare a court. We have before us a copy of the agenda. Are there any amendments necessary?
I'd like to add, September 20th meeting is number six. It's approval minutes. What's showing on the agenda is August 23rd, and we have one more meeting to approve. That's September 20th.
Very good. Would you like to make a motion, sir, with that amendment included?
I move that we amend the agenda September 20th minutes for approval. The rest of the session.
I second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Brown, seconded by Commissioner Childers. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Do you have any ceremonial?
I have a...
Yes, sir.
Something that I believe was on the agenda that is, I don't see it on this agenda, was the possible leasing of the RV park. I don't want to have a full-fledged discussion, but I do want to have an informational discussion about that today for our own purposes.
Well, that is on our agenda for the workshop, Dale.
I'd like to talk about it during this meeting.
We can do it at that time?
No, I'd like to talk about it during this meeting.
When you have your chance at the Commissioners' comments?
Okay. That's good.
Any announcements today?
Mr. Chairman, on approval, did we approve the amendments of this committee agenda? Those coups. Shall we make a motion for approval?
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's get right over there.
I move that we approve the amendments that you all received for August 23rd and the VOC meeting for September 20th.
We have a second?
I second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Brown, seconded by Commissioner Childers. All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we'll move on to announcements. Any announcements? I'm going to deviate slightly from the agenda this morning, and there's a matter that I think it's important for the board to deal with today. Most of us are aware of some of the goings-on on social media over the weekend and over the last couple of months, and I'm going to direct these comments to you, Dale.
Please do.
And pursuant to Arkansas, Section 14-88, 305 allows the Board of Commissioners to remove a Commissioner for cause. And cause is described by the, by court cases as legal cause. And I'd like to present a timeline for the board so that you better understand why I feel it's important to bring this forward to this Commission today. We'll start on May 21st, Dale, when you knew that I was homesick, actually with COVID I was in bed, and you called my house screaming that I was conducting a secret meeting here under back phone comments coming down. He made a lot of allegations that day and tried to undermine...
Humber and Euler Mechanical Contractors.
Tried to undermine the credibility of this Commission. About a month later, we received the first of many, many FOIA complaints regarding your respondents to post Commission-related postings on your Facebook page, the one that you administer, the Holiday Island Facebook page, where you described yourself as a Commissioner and have ventured into the realm of discussing business that comes before this board. September 8th, so we've moved forward through a period of time where you were asked by a number, I think every member of this board, the previous district manager and the current district manager, to please stop with the social media work that you were doing. It was contrary to the best interests of the community and of this board. On September 8th, the district manager and myself received a complaint, a complaint of conflict of interest on your part. This complaint was relative to Section 14-3 of the Holiday Island Regulations, which clearly prohibits any member of the Commission or employee of the district from accepting gratuities and so forth, what you were doing at the clubhouse when you performed. The district manager did, conducted an investigation and was able to gain the facts from the clubhouse manager, and in fact, you were being compensated every time you performed with golf passes, which is a violation of the Section 14-3 of the Holiday Island Regulations. Those regulations also call for you to repay all of those monies from those golf passes. September 9th, the posts on Facebook continued on your part, and I put out a warning to all of the Commission members that any post by an official falls under FOIA. Your comment to me was, "I disagree." That's the law, Dale.
No, that's your interpretation of the law.
Okay. On September 24th, the district manager and I were conducting a meeting with a resident who had a business proposal. Happens to be the thing that you're very interested in discussing today, the campground. He burst into the meeting unannounced, saw who was there, and spun and walked out. A few minutes later, he burst into the room again, and I said, "Dale, under FOIA, you and I cannot be discussing business. The open meeting laws prohibit us from being a part of the discussion that's going to go before the board. You again said you disagreed and reluctantly left the room, only to return 10 minutes later, and then you refused to leave the room."
Are you done?
No, I'm not.
Keep going, please.
October 2nd, I emailed the entire board reminding everyone of the FOIA open meeting statute. That email to the board reminding everyone of the FOIA laws, and these are laws, Dale. These aren't Dale's opinion or Bob's opinion.
Well, they are your opinions, Bob, okay? But get on with it. Please, continue. We'll go back through them one at a time, because I'm sure you'll give my chance to rebut, but continue, please.
Well, I may not, but anyway...
Yeah, well, that seems to be your expression of freedom of expression, First Amendment rights, but continue.
The open meeting statute reminder was prompted by your making phone calls to every member of the board except me on September 24th. Some of the members you called two, three times that day, trying to undermine the board's authority, my authority, and making suggestions about something you'd heard about, a camp potential for a campground.
Didn't discuss that camp, okay? We keep going. Let's get it over with so I can rebut these, please.
You did, and you made accusations that there was probably going to be a tiny home community put in the campground. You even insinuated that there was a potential that this individual would be taking over the marina.
What? Just get on with it, okay?
After, after some discussion with you, you said that my view of the law was openly broad, overly broad, I'm sorry.
I find you to be wrong on many things, but continue. Starting with the first bullet point, we won't discuss that.
Dale, you, your conduct throughout this community has been abhorrible, abhorrible at late. In the last three days, I've had 39 personal requests from residents to have you removed from this board immediately, that you have disgraced the community and you've caused undue controversy in the community. I've had two requests from Hi-Sid employees asking me to make sure that I could keep you away from them, that you interfered with their ability to do their job. You have been banned from half the businesses in our commercial district, the Holiday Island, under threat of trespassing arrest. The list goes on, Dale, the ethics violations, the violations of the Arkansas statutes, the violations of the Hi-Sid regulations. The list goes on, as I said. Do you have a comment about this?
Yeah, I do. Are you ready? Are you done?
No, I would like to make a comment.
Okay, just please.
Dale, I told you that I have been concerned about the information that's put on Facebook because in most instances, people are posting items where they have no clue, no knowledge of the financial realities of this district. We all know that if assessments were doubled, which of course they can be, but if assessments were doubled, we still could not take care of the things that need to happen in this community. So that Facebook page has allowed people to, to put out total misinformation, and as, as an elected official, I can't respond. I don't respond. And so my concern is it's created immense division in the community with a lot of mistruths that make me really unhappy. I'm trying right now to figure out how to come up with a marketing campaign to try to let people know what the reality is of the financial situation of the district and as well as what the city can contribute. The city with its limitations of five mils for property owners could never create even a quarter of the income that Hi-Sid does. We do not have a retail community to support the, the property owners through sales tax, which we do not have right now despite what was posted on Facebook yesterday. So yes, I think it's created a lot of problems, and I think every one of us has asked you to please desist because of the problems it's created.
All right. My turn to speak yet? Oh, go ahead. Mr. Stamps?
Dale, this is not everybody jumping on you.
No, I don't care.
All right.
More clarity.
First of all, I receive several phone calls from you, and one thing that I may mention of, I think every time we had a phone call, what we need to do is request an executive session.
Right.
So that we can sit as a board and discuss these things because one-on-one, there is no such thing as one-on-one if you're a Commissioner of the Board of the Suburban Improvement District or any other governmental entity. It has to be out and above board. Facebook, I dumped Facebook months ago because I couldn't stand the trash on there. So I don't do, I don't do Facebook. I don't even look at it. I don't, anyway, that's another story. But anytime that we have anything that we need to discuss, it needs, if it's critical, if it pertains to an individual of the Suburban Improvement District, an employee, or any function in the Suburban Improvement District, it needs to be done in an executive session. That's all I have to say.
Ken?
Okay.
Can I speak now?
You can, sir.
Okay. Well, I thank you for your input. Let's run down the list. Let's start with number one. Could you please read that again, what your allegation was?
You called my home on May 22nd and screamed that I was conducting a secret meeting.
Wrong. I called you that day. You're correct. Now, I can't go into details because it involves a personnel decision and the way that personnel decision was handled, okay? And your actions, and I believe I showed you in the regulations what was the proper way that was supposed to be handled. Your actions opened us up to a serious harassment lawsuit, and your inability to understand law, you told me, "No, it's not our place. It's not our place," until I actually showed you in the Hi-Sid Regulations where it was specifically the board's place to deal with that situation that was occurring. Yet you blew it off, opened us up to a serious lawsuit. If that person would have kept better records, and maybe she did, maybe she didn't want to pursue it.
Dale.
But it probably meant, excuse me, I'm speaking. You personally, not taking the actions that you should have took, opened us up to a lawsuit that could have been very detrimental to Hi-Sid, which is why I called you and asked you why you didn't do what the right thing was to do. And was I hostile? Yes, because it involved an individual and it involved an individual's livelihood, and the way that it was handled was abhorrent, abhorrent in my thing. It could have been handled way better, but we won't go into details because it is something that was discussed in executive session. Let's move on to number two.
Move on?
Tell me what it was. Just read it again. I can't, I didn't write it down.
Resident complaint, FOIA violations repeatedly.
And what would those violations be?
Your Facebook postings.
Okay. Is a public official allowed to have a Facebook page?
They are.
Okay. That's not my Facebook page. I administered that Facebook page. I didn't start it. I administered it, and the reason that I administered it, because no one was doing it, and it asked if I wanted to administer, and I did. That was before I came on the board. But I saw the potential in that Facebook page of actually getting information out to a segment of the population and residents here of Holiday Island to keep them up to date on what is exactly going on here, because I'm tired of hearing that the board is corrupt. I'm tired of hearing that these people are rude and they don't do any work, because that's not true. The board isn't corrupt. I think the board does its best to do what's for Holiday Island, and I'm damn sure going to do what I can do to get that information out there. Now, I've read all the social media stuff, and I have a right, I have First Amendment rights as a board member here. I have a right to post up on Facebook. What gets you in trouble on Facebook is blocking people, is removing comments, and tailoring agenda, which is why I'm very careful about not deleting things anymore, even though it gets, even though it's violating the rules of the page. And I am allowed to put rules of that page on there and delete comments that, that go against those rules, but I am allowed to put information out there. Give me, give me an instance of where I've discussed business, where I have put how I'm going to vote on something or, or ask any member of this board to vote on something or how they're going to vote, or ask how they're going to vote. Please give me one example. Go through the whole freaking Facebook, it's all there.
Let's talk about yesterday.
Okay. Let's talk about yesterday. I was just going to bring that up, so...
You, you took the opportunity because of a personal vendetta you have with a, a business owner here in Holiday Island.
I have no vendetta against Mr. Evans. None whatsoever. He has a vendetta against me, but go ahead.
Anyway, you, you took the opportunity to repost the newsletter that I, that I create monthly for the residents of Holiday Island. You reposted it on the Facebook page that you administer, where you've identified yourself as a Commissioner, and you made a correction to my, to my posting, and you said that the campground lease discussion had been canceled, which was not true.
I don't see it on the agenda.
Why does it have to be on this month's agenda? This is business.
Because you had it on the agenda for October.
No, I said we will be discussing it. I'm sorry.
And then you removed it. And I said the discussion had been canceled. I didn't say anything. No, Bob, and I'm going to tell you why. This is going to get interesting, but continue. First of all, it was posted in Holiday Island Happenings. Is Holiday Island Happenings copyrighted?
You're asking me?
Yes.
No.
Okay. Is the information on there for public distribution?
Yes.
Are people allowed to copy that information and pass it on?
Yes.
Okay. Continue.
When a...
Oh, wait, 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 stop. And you know why it was canceled? Did you not have a conversation at the, at the golf club where I had talked to you about the Beryl Pink situation?
We did talk about it.
Okay. You know, and I told you I had called Danny and that, that, you know, some people had contacted me and they were worried because it was getting to be a dangerous situation. In that conversation, you know, somehow I remember, we talked about the RV park, and you told me that he was withdrawing, that he was withdrawing his proposal to lease the campgrounds, which is why I put that on there, that had been withdrawn or canceled. Because if you had told, YOU told me that was canceled, did you, and, but Dale, let's get back to that meeting, the one you said I burst into, okay? That was the morning that I came in to talk to you, where you and Mr. Presley had decided that you were going to go talk to the attorney, Tim Hutchinson, which came out of the blue, which only came about because Mr. Stamps had happened to walk in and told me, and he had told me that you were going in talking. I was like, "Well, why didn't, why didn't they inform us of any of that? And why didn't we get the opportunity to ask, you know, we maybe had a question for them to ask Mr. Hutchinson? Why did they take it upon themselves, or mostly you, to go and do that?" And then, so I came to talk to Mr. Presley, and I just so happened to show up at a time where you and Mr. Evans and Mr. Presley were in or having a discussion, having a discussion about his proposal to lease the RV park. And I just wanted to talk to him about the Tim Hutchinson thing, but then I was like, well, you know, and then I walked in on that, and so Mr. Presley and I went and had a conversation out there, you know, about, about why we weren't informed about going, about you guys going in talking to Mr. Hutchinson, because maybe we had questions that we would have liked to ask Mr. Hudson. You set yourself up as the board and chairman, and then we came back into the meeting and we were talking, and you said, I says, "Well, do you mind if I just sit in and listen?" Which you took, no, you can't sit in and listen. But yes, I can, Bob. Now, I can't sit in and then listen and then discuss, you know, how I might vote or why we should vote or this and that, but I can sit in and get the information. I cannot discuss the proposal with you at that time, but then you told me in a later conversation that, that, you know, "Why you won't give me this information?" First, you said you hold information from me because you don't want it posted on Facebook. So first of all, you're keeping information from a sitting, boy, you said that, Bob. You said...
I said I hold information from you. You said, you asked me why I don't share everything with you, and what was my response?
Because of the don't Facebook.
No.
That's what your response?
I'll be honest what my response was. My response was, "Because I don't trust you."
Oh, there you go. You don't trust, the same thing. So a sitting board of a member, a sitting member of the board, you want to keep information because you don't... Then you told me, "Well, I'm just separating the chaff from the wheat." Well, whose decision is it to decide what is chaff and what is wheat? Okay? Why did you have, you made yourself the person that's going to vet everything and then bring the total, total, "Oh, here's the package. We discussed it. We filled it out and we developed it. Here, vote on it." Doesn't the board have a voice in developing these plans? Why is it, why, why aren't we putting, since we're in this discussion, why aren't we putting the lease of the RV park up for bid? We've had, and I told you, and I know we have had other people inquire about buying or leasing that RV park, to which you said, "I've never seen anything," which was a flat-out misstatement, for lack of a better word.
It was almost on my part.
Yeah, well, then you have, you seem to pay attention to a lot of stuff, but conveniently forget some stuff when it's under your, in fact, I would like, have you ever had, who initiated the conversation between you and Mr. Evans concerning the RV park? You seem to be all in it, you papers? In fact, where is the initial paper and initial plan that he brought? Why didn't anybody on the board get to see that, Bob?
Mr. Kellison, if I may, I personally gave you a copy of that the day...
No, you handed me the copy, and I took a look at it, and I read the first couple lines, saw what it was about, and I put it back on the table.
You threw it.
But then, but yeah, I tossed it on the table.
I just wanted, I just wanted to clarify that, that I gave, I know that I gave...
Yeah, you handed me, but what, but my question, Mr. Presley, is why wasn't that information distributed to the rest of the board members?
Mr. Evans contacted me, asked if he could have a meeting with me about a proposal for the campground. I said, "Of course, I'm happy to meet with you. I'll meet with any business owner. I'll meet with any resident about it."
You're extremely good about that.
Because I make myself available. He brought it to me. We looked at it. We told him he would have to do a presentation for the board if he wanted to have a proposal for the campground, and he asked us questions regarding the taxes on the property. He asked us for a map of the boundary lines and some other basic information that if you were going to have a proposal for the campground, you would want to have that background information. I gave him everything he asked for, and he was supposed to bring back a presentation for this board.
And...
And then, and then he changed his mind, and now he's not going to do that, but...
Well, what is it? He's changed his mind, he's not going to do it, or he's going to do it at a later date? He's just, what, what did you say? Oh, let me get the, make sure I get the wording right.
I hope I answered your question.
Oh, you did.
He reached out to me and asked me.
And I will say, during this time period, and the main reason, and we'll get it, and we'll bring this up, the main reason why I called Mr. Brown and, and Ms. Childers and Mr. Stamps was because we were having a tremendous problem with communication at that time. You were sending stuff out, but the email situation had been changed, and nobody was getting emails, nobody was getting information. You have been extremely diligent about getting information out to the board, okay?
Yes.
And so anyway...
Dale, did you not receive an email from the district manager advising you, as well as all the other board members, that he was going to have a meeting with a potential attorney to represent Holiday Island?
Not to my knowledge. That's what I'm saying. There was about, all of a sudden, I got emails from him on a regular basis, and then boom, nothing.
No, I received that one. While Dale looks for, they have to make a point of clarification, because I don't want all these people sitting here thinking that we had an employee termination issue. While Bob was sick and while Bob was on vacation, as vice chair, I dealt with the district manager in a reprimand for an employee. in a reprimand for an employee. And that employee chose to leave the district's employment. There was no termination.
Proposal was incomplete, nothing. Suzanne, trust me. That whole situation was handled so badly that, like I said.
Dale, this is a personal matter. Dale, this is a personal matter.
Yeah, yeah.
Nothing.
Anyway, you said it was withdrawn because it was incomplete, is what you said. So really hasn't been.
That's true, isn't that not true?
Right, but it hasn't been withdrawn, he's still pursuing, I mean, I think we're still having a meeting on this. But anyway, back to this. So we were in a situation there where we weren't getting the information and stuff. And yes, I talked to Ken and I talked to Suzanne and I talked to Mr. Stamps. And I asked them, I asked Mr. Stamps about what he knew about you and, you know, what the meeting that you guys were gonna have with Mr. Hutchinson about. And then I gave them some information. I know, hey, did you know that their meeting, that Mr. Evans has a proposal for the RV park? That's all, I didn't say, you know, we shouldn't do this or we're not gonna do this or how you think you'll vote on this or what's your opinion on this. It was basically informational, you know? And we are allowed to give each other information. I'm not allowed to call people up and poll them, "How are you gonna vote on this? How are you gonna vote on this? How are you gonna vote on that?" I don't think I ask anybody that. I'm aware of the Freedom of Information Act rules. And concerning, just like I said, concerning that meeting, it's not wrong for two people at the board. Arkansas has some of the most restrictive Freedom of Information Acts. In a lot of states, you know, as long as there's not a quorum, two people or whatever the amount that's under a quorum can get together and talk. But you cannot ask people how they're gonna vote. You cannot trade things for votes. You cannot talk about how you're gonna vote on an issue. And as far as Mr. Evans, he has brought a lot of businesses into this, I know he's got that. And I have supported his businesses on that Facebook page. I had a conversation with someone, I don't know who it was. And concerned, I says, "You are more than welcome to post information on this Facebook page and stuff." I am very careful, I pretty much allow almost anything on that Facebook page. Especially that's of interest to the residents of Holiday Island. Now, concerning the blowback and everything it'll get, you seem to think that if there wasn't a Facebook page, that everything would be all hunky-dory in this community and it'd be all rainbows and unicorns. The problem is, it's not that way. There are a lot of people, a lot of people, for every person posting something negative and some of the totally off-the-wall stuff that I see on that Facebook page, there's probably fifty people that agree with them, each one of those. But it seems to be just a few people that seem to do ninety percent of the posting. The thing is, burying our heads in the sand and acting like it doesn't exist and acting like we don't have serious problems out. You don't think, I don't know that we can't give the infrastructure to the city because they have to pass a property tax? You don't think I know they can only do a five mill tax? I mean, I was born at night, but it wasn't last night. I'm not an idiot, okay? And I appreciate people who take me at that, okay? Because I know what the hell I'm talking about. And I have a right to inform the residents of this community what's going on and what issues that we've got coming down the road. Because as a resident, I don't wanna be blindsided by all this stuff. I want people to know what the facts are and what the consequences of the votes and actions that this board take. And if that means that I gotta put it on Facebook, which is one source of information, then I'm gonna put it on Facebook. You go through every one of those posts and what you'll see is not one conversation of how I'm gonna vote or how I actually feel about a thing. You wanna cop AOBs? The question was, if you could pay off your AOBs, would you? Okay? That was the question. Is there something wrong with that? Do you see something wrong with that, knowing that piece of information? Because I was told, oh, it'll probably only be ten or fifteen people. But I don't agree with that. I think it's gonna be hundreds, hundreds of people. Because my first thought when I saw that was, man, I'll pay off my AOBs, okay? But no, we don't wanna discuss nothing. We don't wanna bring up anything that might be controversial, even though we have huge problems coming down in this community. And you owe it to this community to inform them about what's going on.
Back to your original question.
You asked me to take, don't take, take that post down. Take that post down. I don't want people to know there's a meeting at nine AM. That's what that post was about yesterday. Hey, here's the agenda for today. Please take that down, I don't want it too controversial. Why don't you, you know, you preach and you talk transparency, but when you see it and the ugly side of it, you're scared to death of it. But you know what? I, you know, regardless of the outcome of this meeting, if you think that Facebook page is going away, you are gravely mistaken, all right? It'll actually give me more freedom. I hold my tongue and I'm very careful about what I post on there. Because, you know, I don't want to bring Holiday Island down. I'm trying to make Holiday Island a better place. But if you guys don't get it together and get your information out there to the public about what's going on, we are gonna have serious problems down the road. It's time to do it now. I don't see anybody out there saying, "Hey, this is it," you know? This is what's gonna happen. This is what Mrs. Grace wrote, is, I hope, I assume that it's going to be a thing. I don't see anybody trying to get that information out to the majority of property owners here. And that's huge information, you know? It's just like, like Mrs. Roden, I think she's on Facebook somewhere there, you know? I've talked to her several times about the roads, about her roads, okay? And I, as much as I wanted to tell her, "Yeah, we'll get them fixed," or this and that, the reality of the situation is, the roads that she has in question, it's going to take time and stuff, has got to be done in a certain manner. Do you agree with that? Is that wrong that I told her that, that it might be three years down the road that we have to deal with the water problem first? You know, really? Do what you want, take a vote, okay?
Any other comments from board members?
Dale, on the agenda number eleven, there's a whole business rec center damage discussion, new business contract with attorney Tim Hutchinson, and two assessment of benefit payout discussion and consideration. So, the events that led up to those three items were pursued and we had a difficult time here because of change of district managers. But the way that we could vote on those two things today, if there's a contract with Hutchinson or if we could pay off our assessment of benefit, is, could only be today. Because September twentieth was a meeting a month ago. And the items that you needed to find out about between September twentieth and October eighteenth have been the meeting with Tim Hutchinson. And I had some questions about this and I talked to Danny about it. So, we're not, we couldn't do it any earlier than today. You say about getting information out to the people. Today is the day that the information will be coming out.
I'm sorry, I lost, I lost my train of thought.
Okay, okay.
Suzanne. The information about, yeah, the information about the rec center, I have no problem about that. I mean, people have asked me about it and I says, "We're gonna talk about it on this meeting, but it's not gonna be cheap." And that, you know, I've told people, I don't know if I told anybody on here, but it's not, I think you have expressed views, you know, we had a brief discussion about it when you first said seventy-five thousand, that I'm not in favor of it being bulldozed, that I think that there's alternatives.
But Dale, the two things that I'm more concerned about, Dale, the contract with attorney Tim Hutchinson. I have some questions for Danny about that and the chair about that coming up. We get to that point. And also, assessment of benefit payout. Then, the other one that pops up is disallowing High-Sid. I mean, I've been on the board, I've been on the board for four and a half years and I've worked a lot and I was in the other lawsuit that happened in two thousand twelve, thirteen. And I don't see those anymore. We paid a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to this same attorney pursuing. Okay, you knew that, right? You knew that?
Yeah, I knew.
Okay. So, why, why are we, why would you, and you're, you're saying in this meeting before a couple of times, we gotta get rid of the Sid.
I've never said that. I said, "We need to develop a plan to make the transformation from High-Sid over to the city." But we need to develop a plan because eventually, the money for High-Sid, High-Sid has an expiration date. The city doesn't have an expiration date. We've got to figure out how long it's gonna take. We, people do not want, we cannot go as High-Sid in perpetuity. We have to figure, the writing is on the wall. High-Sid at some point.
I didn't wanna get into this other than.
No, we're into it, no, this is a discussion, this is a discussion that we should be having.
Dale, I haven't finished.
And I'll be done. We have sixteen meetings over on the island. Two of them were the trailer that we set up so we'd have the people who were for incorporation and people who were for against. And when we had a meeting for against incorporation, guess how many showed up to present their ideas for candidate? I'll give you an example, zero, none. And then we had about ten or twelve meetings, or they did, the committee to incorporate had them at the pavilion. And we had a pretty good turnout there. So, many, many times, there was the opportunity for people to find out how long High-Sid would last and could we coexist with the city. And the answer was in the vote. And it didn't pass by much, but it passed. So let's move forward with that and it could go into perpetuity, however you pronounce that word. It could, because we're getting money from the state, turn back funds and so forth, plus the assessments of a low seven-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollar.
The reason I came on this board is because I felt, or the reason I applied for this board was because I felt that we need to have a plan to transition from High-Sid over to the city. The city needs to be the principal government authority. Now, I don't think High-Sid necessarily needs to disappear completely. I think High-Sid would be the proper entity to take care of the amenities. But the hard infrastructure has got to go to the city, in my opinion. But it can't be done tomorrow. I understand the constraints that the city has on raising taxes and I'm trying to get that across to people on Facebook. If you look at the arguments that I make, all of the arguments are for, hey, the city cannot do it at this time, they have got to get up on their feet and be able to walk.
But see, you're a High-Sid commissioner and you're not supposed to be doing that on Facebook. You're talking about city going away or the High-Sid going away.
Have you heard, you know, this Brian T., I can't pronounce his last name, posted, posted an interesting article, you know, "The board can vote to dissolve High-Sid." So don't say, "Well, it's not our issue, it's not our task." You guys have got, we, because I'm still on the board for God knows how much longer. We have got to start handling these issues and quit going, "Hey, well, let's have our thirty-minute meeting and this is all good and fine," Danny.
That's another meeting, that's another meeting topic. And maybe if we approved this attorney, he would be here to advise us about that. But it's not for today's meeting, but I think you wanted to.
Well, today's meeting, it seems to be about getting rid of me, so do it. If you're gonna do it, do it, okay? I've said my piece, I'm not gonna argue with y'all anymore. You know, do what you gotta do. And then also I ask is try and do a better job of serving the residents of this community, keeping them informed at least, okay? So, save me the hassle.
Dale, we presented repeated violations of both FOIA and the Holiday Island regulations. All of those examples together show legal cause for your removal from the board. It's, you've taken us to a point that we really tried to avoid. We repeatedly, all of us, asked you repeatedly to back down the tone, back down what you were doing and you choose to go about Facebook, not only Facebook, but the community.
So, so you are, what you're saying is you want to deny me my First Amendment rights?
No, that's not what I'm saying.
No, no, if I ask me to not comment on Facebook and then, and then, by then, by doing punishment because I refuse to quit posting on Facebook, you are punishing me for my First Amendment rights and that's, you know, I'll talk to a lawyer about that, but let's get on with it.
I've never denied you your.
Yeah, you have, you just told me you need to quit posting on Facebook. And now, what you've done, because I wouldn't quit posting on Facebook, you're gonna have a vote. And I'm sure you're behind this, Bob, but go for it, buddy. Good, bring it on.
It's become very personal, hasn't it?
Yes, it has become personal because you made it that way. First of all, you know, like, well, I don't trust you, I'm not gonna give you information, but then carry on.
I never said I didn't give you.
No, 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 no.
Wait, wait, wait. First of all, district business is to be conducted in a meeting, not on Facebook.
Well, I disagree, Mr. Stamps, okay? I have a right to give the residents of this city information that is public record. If you find anything on that Facebook page you haven't even read properly.
No, but if you find.
If you find, there you go. I would hate to move into the twenty-sixth year and know what residents thinking to see. Because you will find everything I posted on that Facebook page is. No, do the vote and get it over with. I'm about sick of it, I can see why, never mind. Go, go.
On behalf of this board, I would make a motion that we proceed with Section fourteen eighty-eight, three oh five of the Arkansas Code, calling for the removal for cause of a commissioned member. That being Dale Kelson. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, sir. Motion's been made by the chairman, seconded by Commissioner Stamps. All in favor?
Aye.
Sit down.
Can we take, can we?
Do a roll call.
Oh, sure, okay. Commissioner, Chairman Dyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Childers?
I'm voting yes. I, I, the reason I'm voting yes is because I think it's the duty of a member of the board commission to present the very best information that they have about Holiday Island. My concern is I've seen numerous posts on there where people said, "I thought I might retire to Holiday Island, but I don't think so now." And I just think it's important we put the best foot forward. So because of that, I am voting yes.
Commissioner Stamps?
I vote yes. You can't, we can't throw our opinions to the public as if they were the board. You can't do that.
You also can't make decisions on something you've never even read and have zero idea about. I vote yes too, if you wanna put that down on the record. Thank you, it has been my honor to serve the residents of Holiday Island. People don't agree with how I did it, but I have a purpose in doing it and I will continue to do it. I have agreed, I have come from a journalism background and so, I will continue to fight for information to get out to the citizens of Holiday Island. Thank you, it's been a pleasure. And Ken and Suzanne and Mr. Stamps, I appreciate, appreciate that. Not so sure about you, Bob, thank you.
The next item on our agenda will be public comments. The time has come for public comments. Public comments will, unless you wanna take a break. Public comments will be limited to a three-minute comment.
Danny, we have a timer.
I do, I do.
Thank you.
A three-minute comment per speaker. We will not be responding directly to the comments at this time. Comments that we hear that we feel additional conversation.
Okay.
Additional conversation might be needed or that we need to have the district manager investigate further. We will act on those and bring replies to the next meeting, so. Is there, yes? Please identify yourself by name and address, please.
Linda Graves.
Thank you.
Twenty-nine Table Rock Drive. I think the board made a mistake in trying to remove Mr. Kelson. He may have been uncomfortable to deal with on the board. I've had to sit on the board with a member for many years, well, for a few years anyway, who was extremely difficult to deal with and I know. And I know Ken Braden, who I'm talking about. And the suburban improvement district boards do not have any authority to take upon themselves to remove a member of the board. The piece of the law that you quoted, unfortunately, is for municipal improvement districts. A totally different section than suburban improvement districts. I think you've made a mistake. And I'm sorry to have to call it to your attention, but I, I think it was wrong.
Thanks.
Ma'am, gentlemen, my name is Brian Tagley Pharaoh, and I reside at thirty-five Burke Millay. This whole process has been a little dumbfounded. I thought I would be the very last person to be coming to defense of Mr. Kelsey. However, I would agree with, with Ms. Graves. What we're setting right now is a very slippery slope precedent that I'm not sure what comes from it, where board members can duly elect themselves to vote out another member simply for stuff they don't agree with. Like I said, me and, and Mr. Kelsey have had quite a dispute over the past month and a half on social media. But I, I appreciate his transparency and his willingness to try to get his opinion across. What's going on right now is absolutely unbelievable. And I believe y'all have become a power that cannot be contained. What needs to happen, the conversation that needs to be having, is the immediate dissolution of Hy-Sid. That needs to happen. Hy-Sid cannot run in tandem with the city. It cannot happen. There cannot be two forms of government that, that operate in the same way. My roads have not been maintained in over three years, yet I am forced to make an assessment on, on those payments. I, I am forced to make those payments. I'm sorry, I'm a little bit nervous. I've never been up like this. That, it, it, to me, it's baffling. In 2020, I completely forgot to pay my assessment. I run a business, I run the Regis Springs Flowers and Gifts. I'm trying to get another off the ground. And it completely slipped my mind. It must have slipped my mind because my roads still have potholes all over them. And I've been talking to y'all about it after two years, and yet nothing has been done. You come at me with a lawyer, that's the only reason I'm here today. If you had a threat to foreclose on my home, I would not be standing here. Anybody who knows me well knows that I do not like being anywhere at nine o'clock in the morning. But I'm here today because I'm voicing my concern for what I am seriously worried about is happening in my town. That's all I have to say. I appreciate y'all's time. Thank you very much.
Brian?
Yes, Carl.
Would you please re, identify your address for the, for the record?
My name is Brian Tagley Pharaoh, and I live at thirty-five Burke Millay. I would also like to say Carl has been absolutely awesome in this whole process. Since talking to him since the beginning of this month, he has been fantastic. He's been empathetic and patient. And Carl, thank you very much, sir. I appreciate you.
My pleasure.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wishing to address the board? If not, we will, how about on Zoom? Anyone on Zoom want to raise their hand?
I'm going to look and see, you need to add that all.
Seeing none? There are none, Carl? Thank you, sir. We'll move on to the next item, item ten. Reports, any reports from the district manager? Item eleven, business items. First, the old business. And Mr. Presley, he could give us an update on where we stand relative to the wreck center damage and what, what information you've received.
Well, I have been in contact several times with the insurance agent. And he has sent two different people out here, claims adjuster and a construction engineer to assess the damage under the building. We actually went in, thank you to Kenny and his people at the road department. They had to go in and cut some holes in the floor so we could gain access to different parts of the foundation to be able to assess the damage. I still do not have that report from the engineer. I followed up again last week. And they are going to be sending us a report and recommendations on what they think we should do for the repairs. Obviously, it's, it's going to be costly. But in talking with him, right after they had been under the building and taking a look at everything, he believes that it might be repairable without having to demolish the building. But there's, there's also potential for damage on the interior walls where the moisture has come up through the floor and into the interior walls. That, that remains to be seen. But obviously, you would have to get into those walls to be able to see that. And we didn't go to that extent yet. But still waiting on that report, and I'll keep the board informed. Meanwhile, I would like to say that thank you to, to Carl, Janice. Janice has done an amazing job in transitioning over to the Island Room. And so we've set up operations over there so people can continue to come to the recreation center and, and pay to play golf and pickleball and all of that. So we're glad to be able to continue to provide those services.
So there are no interruptions in that?
Correct.
In services as far as that amenity group on the island, so?
Correct.
Good. Any other questions from the board, from the district manager?
Well, what is the timeline? I'm not getting those further reports.
Sir, I wish I could tell you. I followed up, I believe it was Wednesday. And I'm still, still waiting to hear back from you. I'll, I'll follow up again today.
And do you anticipate that the information that we get from those engineers would give us the information that we need to put out a bid for replacement of those floor joists?
Yes, yes, I believe it would. And I think it will probably be an amount that would require us to, to get three bids.
Thank you.
Oh, one other question. I think there was a question about any other buildings in the district that might need to be looked at for similar problems of the foundation. Does that, does that come to your attention, or are there any others? I think the ballroom was mentioned, or the country club building. But that's sort of...
That is not coming to my attention. But we could certainly do that. If they're built in the same manner as that building, they were probably built around the same time. No? Okay.
No.
Mr. Stamps has information that I, and some history that I don't have.
Our historian here.
The wreck center was built in early seventies. That was the community center. That's where everything took place. We're a very, very small community. As a matter of fact, when I came here, there were sixteen houses on Holliday Island, and McCullough owned ten of them. But the wreck center was built by a gentleman, he was the, a licensed contractor that was licensed in and around this area, about the only one that was licensed at that point in time. His name is Richard Sharp. He was from Kimberly City, Missouri. And he built the fire station, and he built the wreck center. The clubhouse on the eighteen-hole golf course was built in the eighties. That was built by the construction of McCullough Construction at that point in time, doing the house building. I was asked the other day about how come the wreck center was built on a beam and pier structure as opposed to a slab? In those days, early days of Holliday Island, everything was built on a beam and pier, simply because there was not adequate field to put down, to make a base for a slab to be put on. There's, if you look around, there's not many deposits of red clay in this area. There is, you can put it on sand, but that's not the best in the world. The best in the world is granite dust, which will compact as hard as Chinese arithmetic. But anyway, it's there. But at that point in time, there was not adequate field to be had. And that's why it was placed on a wooden beam and pier. And consequently, it's been added on to a piece here, a piece there, a piece added. And probably, the proper ventilation was probably not, or was covered up, if it was ever there. And so, anyway, I'm sorry. That's just a little history of why we got that problem.
Thank you. We'll move on to new business, the first item being the potential for a retainer contract with attorney Tim Hutchison. And I'll ask the district manager to give the board a little background of why, why we feel this is necessary and what it views as a benefit of it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As commissioners might recall, about probably six weeks ago or so, I sent you an email to tell you that I've had a conversation with Mr. Hutchison by phone, and I was going to go visit with him. And you're also aware that there have been a couple of lawsuits in the state of Arkansas, one involving Holliday Island, the other involving Cherokee Village, that Mr. Hutchison was the attorney that filed those lawsuits. And he has done a lot of homework and research. And he is pretty well-recognized as the expert on suburban improvement districts in Arkansas. He, well, one of those lawsuits, the Cherokee Village lawsuit, was settled out of court, but it resulted in, I guess, a win for Mr. Hutchison and the plaintiffs. And we still don't have the final settlement yet. That has not been authored. But we will get that eventually. And I think there will be some takeaways from the Cherokee Village lawsuit that would be applicable to Holliday Island. So I thought it would be wise for us to consult with him. So, reached out to him by phone, we had a lengthy conversation. And then Chairman Dyer and I went over there and met with him. And we discussed a number of issues. We discussed the ALB study. We discussed water and roads and funding and private money and public money. And then, of course, the relationship with the district and the city and how that should work. How it should work from a legal perspective to keep us all out of hot water and make sure that we're doing things the right way. And it was immediately evident that he knows his business. He understands suburban improvement districts better than anyone that I know of. So we had a good visit. He sent a proposal. And I have that. I meant to hand this out prior to the meeting, but if you'd like to, commissioners, take a look at that. I sent you this by email, but just so that you have it in front of you. This was a proposal from him for the district to retain his services for a period of, of one year. And you can see that the pricing is from, from one to six months is one price. And then from seven through month twelve is another price. Because we think we can, can make some significant changes and resolve some legal questions in that first six months. So I'm asking for the board's input on this and your support to, to hire Mr. Hutchison to, to make sure that we have our house in order and that the decisions that we're making here on financially, on road maintenance, on water, on grants, on funding, on our, our partnership with our, our friends at the city, that we're doing all of that in accordance to all of the relevant Arkansas statutes.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this contract, but I'd like to ask questions during the discussion period.
May I make a comment?
We have a motion on the floor to approve the contract. We have seconded?
Oh, I will second, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. A motion's been made by Commissioner Brown, seconded by Commissioner Childers to accept the contract agreement with attorney Tim Hutchison. And now we can have comments.
My question, Danny, you answered for me in your office. But it was a concern to me that, I don't know how many attorneys Mr. Hutchison has in his firm, probably quite a few, probably. I don't know what RMP, LLP stands for, but he's probably the principal partner there. What my concern was, and I think you answered it several times, is if we take him on for six months as an attorney, and I was involved in the last lawsuit that Hy-Sid was involved in, and I know he knows his stuff, unfortunately, we had to pay one hundred and twenty-five thousand for knowing his stuff, assessments. But at any rate, I think he is a good attorney. And my question to you was, could one of his other partners sue Holliday Island? You know, he's going to tell us all good news and good things to avoid and how to keep our house in order legally. But then, could any of his partners bring suit for a city, a citizen rather, against us?
I do not believe so, out of the same firm, or not the same law firm.
Now, that was my understanding as well in the meeting that we had with him.
My, my question is, is Mr. Hutchison, is this not a direct conflict of interest? Number one, he, he is the party that sued Hy-Sid.
Right, yes.
And now, he's going to represent us?
Yes.
Gentlemen, I, I, I don't believe that's going to pass the taste test with, with the code of ethics of, of being a lawyer.
Well, there are...
And I'll give you a final example. We were, Holliday Island Suburban Improvement District was very much involved, along with McCullough Corporation, in a class action suit that lasted four years. It dwindled down until we got presented to a federal judge by the name of H. Franklin Waters. He was a federal judge of the district, Allen Fort Smith. My dad used Franklin Waters when I was probably twelve, fifteen years old in a lawsuit against the city of Bearville, Arkansas. Inmate domain was what it was all about. We got to court. And the first thing that Franklin Waters said is, gentlemen, I represented Larry Stamps' father many, many years ago in a suit. He disclosed it. He said, will that be, will that cause a conflict of interest with anyone here? That was probably twenty-five-plus years. And this guy's willing to make us his client? I think it's a conflict of interest. I don't know...
Could I comment on that?
Yeah.
Commissioner?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchison, when we met with him, he explained to us his purpose in taking on the lawsuit against Hy-Sid, which was in twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen. And he said his purpose was for Hy-Sid to conduct business in accordance with Arkansas law. He said it was not to shut down the district. It was to make sure that the district complies with the law and has their house in order and does things the right way. And as district manager, that's my goal. I want us to have our house in order. I want to make... I want us to have our house in order, I want to make sure that everything that we do is the letter of the law, and we follow the statutes and case law exactly, so that we protect the district, we protect our interest, and we owe it to the property owners here to keep our house in order and do things the right way. And so I went to the best attorney in the state of Arkansas on how to run a S I D. Currently, there are no legal actions pending, we have no contract with any other attorney, and it just makes sense to me, if you're going to hire an attorney to guide you in how to do business, you go to the very best one you can find, and that's Tim Hutchison. And he said his goal would be the same if he represents us, it's just to make sure that he gives us good, sound advice, that he knows will withstand the scrutiny of the courts.
I understand, that's the goal that we all have, is for the benefit of Holiday Island. We're not, if we don't have that goal, we shouldn't be here, number one.
Agreed.
That is definitely our goal. But all I'm saying is, I think Tim Hutchison is in conflict of interest. I think he is not fulfilling whatever legal... And don't get me wrong, I was told a long time ago, practicing law without a degree is bear hunting with a switch. And I fully agree with that, so I'm not proclaiming that I'm a lawyer, but I do know through life, that any time that you obtain a lawyer, and he has been on the other side in any conflict of anybody that you're dealing with legally, he cannot represent you.
According to him and his code of ethics as an attorney, that is not the case. He has no, because there's no pending litigation, that lawsuit was seven, eight-years ago, and that's water under the bridge.
May I make a comment? Obviously, I would like to have the very best attorney in Holiday, in suburban improvement districts to look at what we're doing. And so I will vote to hire him, assuming that the conflict of interest is resolved. However, really, what I was going to speak to is the property owners of Holiday Island. I think Ken and I may be the only ones that were around during the past lawsuit, which, and I'm going to challenge your number, Ken, what I understood was, by the time the board voted to settle, which it was, the only reason they settled was it was financially prudent to settle, because it would have cost so much more, because the only ones that went in the lawsuit are the attorneys, that it cost almost a quarter of a million dollars, that lawsuit did, to Heisit. And when I think of what could have been accomplished with that money, if I think about what can be accomplished with the money that we're going to have to pay him for this, you know, I have people whisper in my ear and say, so-and-so's going to sue you, so-and-so's going to sue you. And when that happens, you're suing your neighbors, and you're making it less possible for us to provide the services that we need to provide. And so I'm going to implore anyone who is in Holiday Island, who has any concern, bring your concern, bring your questions, bring your facts, to the office here, a lot of times the administrative staff will be able to resolve that. If not, they're certainly welcome to go up the chain of command, talk with you, and if that, if you're not able to resolve it, then they can come to the board and ask for a hearing. But I cannot think that there is not anything that happens in Holiday Island that can't be resolved by respectful discussion and acknowledgement of what the facts are. And so that's really my issue, is I hate to spend this money, I hated to spend the last money, even though it was the right thing to do, because it would have been more expensive otherwise, because we have road issues that need to be taken care of, we have all kinds of issues, okay? And every penny, we have spent on attorneys, because, and we're doing it defensively, really. It's money we can't spend on something else. So, okay, I said my piece.
If you don't mind, Danny, I'll read this paragraph for the audience, too. This is from Mr. Hutchison. "Admittedly, this is an unusual arrangement, one that I've never done before, but because of the potential conflict of interest and lost opportunities that come with the potential conflict of interest, the partners take a guaranteed amount as necessary from a business standpoint." I hope you agree, but understand if you want to go a different direction. And the first paragraph starts with, they usually charge $3.50 an hour, his firm does, and him, and they're going to give it to us for $2.50 an hour for six months. But they do bring up what Mr. Stamps was bringing up and what my question was, and you know, we, we're, he's charging less because we're, we don't have gobs of money like New York City or something, but I think that last paragraph says, that's, they resolve the conflict of interest by not being involved in a suit against us, because their firm is defending us. I think, I think that's...
Well, the clients that he's had in the past, if, I think he would be required to get clearance from them to represent us. Now, I mean, he was adjudicating their interest. That's his duty, just as his duty to us would be to protect everything that we do to the best of his ability. I think he has to clear this up with previous clients before he can even get into a contract with us, but you know, it's his license, not mine.
Well, you do, Ken's right, I mean, he speaks to the potential conflict of interest in this email, so if that can be resolved, I don't have a problem if he's the best in Arkansas.
And we did have, we discussed that at length with him.
And that's what really led him to go to his partners to get, I guess, a broader answer to that question of conflict of interest. Till Larry's point about getting some sort of release from previous customers, or people that he had represented in the past, it's been my experience that if an attorney doesn't have an ongoing relationship with a client, then, you know, those relationships are, tend to be, have ended with that relationship when it ended. But, you know, it is so critical to Holiday Island at this time, and, you know, Brian spoke to the, to the issues that we're facing right now, we've got questions, we're going to be discussing here in a minute about the potential to pay off the A O B. Well, the A O B raises all other issues, a myriad of issues relative to, well, how much is that exactly? And what if there's another assessment of benefit, you know, three-years from now? And if the majority of the people pay off their investment benefit, then who pays for the maintenance? How do you have upkeep? So we, there are so many questions, and the relationship with the city government, you know, to make sure how public monies are used to mesh with our needs, and so it is very, very important that we have absolutely the best attorney possible when it comes to suburban improvement districts. Now, I don't, I don't think this contractual relationship would be anything that would go on for eternity or anything, I mean, but we have immediate business today that we need to have answers, and, you know, to use an attorney that, who also handles traffic violations, isn't good enough right now.
Chairman, I have a comment. I appreciate Linda Graves, she brought us a three-page memo here about assessment of benefits and not approving, paying off your entire assessment of benefits. This is the kind of thing that a lawyer does, and she's just gone in for us for free. Thank you very much, Linda. But we would need an attorney. When we get to that item on the agenda, I'm not sure if we're allowed to, or legally we can allow anyone to pay off assessment of benefit. So who would I call to get advice on that very subject? Probably the person in Arkansas that knows the most about that, Mr. Hutchison. We've had three attorneys representing Heisit since I've been here. One was Tom Kiklak, who represented us in the Bishop lawsuit, one is Matt Bishop, who represented us for a long time, and there's another attorney on a bill of list that handles foreclosures and so forth. But I think it would be safe to say that none of them have the background in S I D, suburban improvement district, that he does. So, I don't know, Mr. Stamps, I'm wondering if you'd be comfortable, if you had a letter, as it were, from Mr. Hutchison saying that he could represent us and give us advice on these upcoming matters, dissolving the S I D, that's the biggest thing in the world that we would have to look at. Is that legal? Is it, you know, we got it on Facebook, and I know you don't watch it, I've just been on it for a couple of weeks, we've got pages and pages and pages of blog posts about S I Ds and how you dissolve S I D. Well, I'm not for that, but I want to make sure that we're doing the right thing, so I want the best lawyer to advise us, and so that's why I would vote for the...
Yes. Yes.
Can I speak just a moment to what Ken mentioned?
Yes, if you would come up to the podium, please, Linda. We know your name, but please, recite it for the record.
Are we going to get her a sign? Linda Graves, I just want, since you've mentioned my name and what I wrote there, I'd like to make a comment about what you said, that you might have to consult with your attorney on that at some point.
Right.
It would be a logical thing to consult with an attorney about. And I would remind the board that the people that sued us in 2012, 13, and were using Mr. Hutchison as their attorney, also raised the issue of paying off the A O B back after that settlement came about.
Right.
So I would wonder if he wouldn't have a conflict of interest in advising you about that same issue, because he was, they were using him at that time, and I'm assuming he told them to push the issue with Heisit. Conflict of interest. Matt?
We have another question from the audience, please.
Barb Coon, 62, Holiday Island Drive. I have so many thoughts going through my head right now, I'll try to get them out. When I saw on the agenda that you were considering contracting with Tim Hutchison, I'm going to push your brain dramatically. Although you considered him an expert on S I D law, I would say he's an expert on his interpretation of S I D law. If any of you have ever read the S I D law, you would see how convoluted it is, very, can be interpreted a myriad of ways. And in his pursuit of helping his clients sue our district, he had the most harsh interpretation of that law that he could find. And I can, I can say right now, without Linda Graves proving to them how A O Bs are calculated and why we pay them, we would not have settled that lawsuit. She stopped them in their tracks. And in that, we had to pay him $125,000 to stop the service. And now we want to pay him again, I've got to congratulate him, even though he can get money from us without having to sue us again. I don't, I don't trust Matt, he's a lawyer. All lawyers will speak to whatever side they need to speak to, and he can, I'm sure, make a total argument of why that last lawsuit was bogus, if we ask him to, because now we're his client. So I'm just reluctant at the fact that we would allow him to do that. Now, the other side of that coin is, keep your friends close, keep your enemies closer. So if we could stop him from suing us again by paying him a residual, I guess, okay, but that's not going to stop any other attorney from taking on, you know, there is a lot of talk out there of a lawsuit that's happening, that people have already hired an attorney, and they're ready to sue us again, and they're going to sue us with the same exact lawsuit that Tim filed. So how is he going to battle that one when he wrote? So I just, you know, we've got unhappy people here that don't want to pay assessments. Well, it'll work, it's life, you got to pay taxes to have your community run, and, but we're going to be getting sued by people that think that's the thing to do. I personally believe the S I D and the city can work together to have a wonderful community here, and don't mind paying the taxes, I'm sorry, I need to answer one more question.
Thank you very much.
Well, now I don't know how to turn it off.
Any other comments?
I wanted to last comment is, if we are in a lawsuit again, I would not like to settle out of court, and I heard the last lawsuit, oh, it'll cost us a million dollars to go to the Arkansas Supreme Court. If we have our ducks in a row, and we have our laws and our regulations set up the way that S I Ds are supposed to be set up, and we are all common sense thinking people, then I'm against settling out of court, just because the attorney bills are so high. And I want an attorney, if we do go to the appeals court, appellate court, or to us, Arkansas Supreme Court, that we're going to win, and we're not going to throw in the towel just because it's going to cost a lot of money. We've got to be prepared, though, before I waste your money, homeowner's money, your property owner's money, we need the best we can get. And I would guarantee, I would sort of venture a guess, that if we were to do a request or proposal of an attorney who has as much knowledge of S I Ds as this guy does, we'd come up with a sort of a big blue sec. We would.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, we have a second.
You have someone, there's just a statement, whoever C and J is, Hutchison is the attorney that sued Heisit, and the attorney for the city was the firm on the other side questioned. Heisit did not have legal representation when the interlock agreement was put into place regarding the fire department, Heisit, and the city. Will he review that agreement?
Oh, the interlock agreement.
Yeah, I mean, he can review that agreement most definitely.
He would be our only attorney, right, Danny?
That's correct, yes.
Other than the attorney that handles our...
Foreclosed.
Let's call it collection, collections, Matt Foreclosed. Mr. Secretary, could you have a roll call for the vote, please?
Yes. Chairman Dyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Childers?
Yes.
Commissioner Stamps?
I'd like to abstain.
Okay, abstain, Commissioner Brown, yes.
Thank you very much, and I know this is a touch point that is uncomfortable, but I think in defense of our district manager, unfortunately, he's faced a lot of hills to climb in the few months he's been here, and his passion for having all of our ducks in a row, of having all of our finances clear and accurate, I have to support that.
Absolutely.
And we'll be as transparent as we can be about all of this, but thank you for what you're doing, sir.
And the issue, too, is, there are so few suburban improvement districts in Arkansas that there are not attorneys that really specialize in that, so you've got to go with the best one that you can find.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
This is a follow-up to the thing I read that Carl was... This is a follow-up to the, to the thing on there that Carlos did. Dan Keyes, 120, Holiday Island Drive. But this is a comment, in my capacity as mayor of Holiday Island, the, all inter-lok agreements that cities have with other agencies have to be reviewed by the Attorney General of the state of Arkansas. So the inter-lok agreement that we have with, that the city has with the district on fire protection has been reviewed by the Attorney General. And since nobody's used the sports metaphor yet this morning, everybody hated Tom Brady, or the people in Tampa Bay hated Tom Brady when he was with the Patriots because he was the best quarterback in the league. Now that he's with Tampa Bay, they love him. So you go with the best quarterback.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That was good information.
The next item on our new business agenda is the assessment of benefit discretion and consideration as far as payoff of the AOB. And again, I'll leave it to you, sir, to lead us into this discussion.
Well, as district manager, my passion is, is to provide our property owners and residents the best possible service. And, and I believe I speak for the board when I say that as well. And I think that starts with, with getting it right in the way we conduct our business here. Thus the reason for wanting to contract with a good attorney, to make sure that our, our finances are in order, that we have a perfectly clean audit every year, that we are following the letter of the law on assessments and on how to run a suburban improvement district. Because we are accountable, and we should be accountable to the people in doing it by the book. And so as it, as it relates to the assessment of benefits payoff, and I have visited with Mr. Hutchinson on, on this issue, and my understanding is, your AOB is a debt. It's a debt that you owe as a property owner. And Mr. Hutchinson believes that, and there's more research to be done on this. I want to be clear on that. There's, there's more research to be done. And now that we are entering into this contract, I'll be visiting with Mr. Hutchinson. But we're sort of working from the premise of some case law that says you, if a person owes a debt, a city or any other quasi-governmental entity cannot require a person to stay in debt. We couldn't require you to, if you owe $8,000 or $10,000, to force you to stay in debt and say, well, no, we're only going to allow you to pay X amount. And so it, it becomes a legal question. Not what the board prefers, not what I prefer. And unfortunately, maybe it's not what's best for the district. It's a legal question. And if the law says you must allow someone to pay off their AOB, we have an obligation to comply with the law. You know, whether we like that or we don't, the law is what it is. So, so that's the issue. And we'll be visiting with Mr. Hutchinson to, to clarify that. And, but as it stands now, that's our understanding, that you cannot require a person to stay in debt. And your AOB is a debt that you owe as a property owner. Now, it wouldn't make sense to pay it off unless, you know, I suppose if you're going to live here forever, or whatever, but...
Or live forever.
Or live forever. So obviously, that's an individual decision that, that has nothing to do with us, but...
Mr. Chairman, Linda, would you mind either if I read a couple paragraphs of your letter that you sent us this morning, or if you were at the podium? Because I think you have some excellent points there.
I'd love to.
It's two bullet points of, there are two ways to work to consider prepayments. And the first sentence said you do not allow prepayment in district assessments.
First of all, just a comment about what Dan said. He's an attorney. As I said before, he's pushed this issue with his clients against Hy-Sid. The man can argue any side of any point. Just because he says that's the law, doesn't mean it can't be argued the other way. And frankly, I don't think he had the best interests of the Holiday Island property owners at heart, nor did I think he had the best interests of the Cherokee Village property owners at heart when he pursued those two lawsuits. He was looking after his own interests, which were monetary strictly. So you need to put his comments, his perspective in context. What I came up with to bring to the board today, and I didn't realize we'd have this robust discussion, actually, but I have always felt that it was not in the property, the overall property owner's interest to pay off the AOB debt, as he calls it. It's not a debt of the property owner. It's a debt of the property. There's a big difference. It's a lien against the property. It passes from ownership to ownership. The current owner is not responsible for paying that off. The property at some point is responsible for paying the debt off. I personally believe that the law, the Hy-Sid or the suburban improvement district law, and a bunch of other improvement district laws, support the fact that because the law in suburban improvement district statutes and these other municipal statutes, municipal property owner improvement districts, municipal improvement districts, soil and conservation improvement districts, they all say it'll be paid in annual installments. If, I looked up, and I have copies printed out here of all the other improvement districts languages. It's surprising. There are several sections of the law covering various forms of improvement districts in the state of Arkansas. It's a common thing that occurred for years and years. They created improvement districts for everything, apparently. And they're, they're just particularly flawed for suburban improvement districts. They probably work for levy improvement districts and soil and conservation improvement districts. Where they're going to do a single construction project and pay it off over time. It, it really doesn't work very well when you have to pay off the debt, which actually Hy-Sid never had to pay off the debt hardly. They were given the stuff pretty much debt-free. But we have to operate and maintain it over time. And identifying the benefit to a property owner and, you know, correlating that with operation and maintenance is very difficult because they want something concrete that's there that adds benefit to the property. It's kind of hard to prove that operation and maintenance adds benefits. It's more like it's an annual thing that adds benefits, you know, for the time being. Doesn't add benefits, you know, long-term. It's hard to project that. But the benefits are there. We just can't get our hands around them. We can't include them in the calculation of a benefit. So that's why we're stuck in the problem we're stuck in. But anyway, yeah, I, I looked at all the other improvement districts. They all kind of use the same language. They copy it over and over and over again. Every time they create a new island one, they use the same, through those sections of calculating the AOB, calculating the interest, paying off over time and all that. They're all using the same language. And so when they, when they specifically say it's going to be paid in annual installments, I think they mean it. I think they meant for it to be done that way. A good lawyer would argue that. So which, which bullet did you want me to read?
The second bullet about what would happen after kind of twelve years of paying it off.
Oh, yeah. If, if we accepted prepayments, I thought there was a couple of ways you could go. You could either bank the money and just take the interest off of it and apply that into the assessment fund as part of assessment revenue, just apply that interest. If you did that, that would probably amount to at most a hundred, maybe even 200 if the interest rates go up a year, that you could collect interest off of a single R1 repayment. But you, you contrast that 100 or 200 dollars a year that you would be adding to the assessment fund versus the rest of the property owners, which are paying 700 to 1,000 dollars a year into that assessment revenue. So people, by letting them pay off, they are not pulling their fair share of the weight of the assessment burden, of the assessment revenue burdens that SID faces. If you also, another way to go is you could deposit that money in the bank and then take out a portion of it every year, a portion that would be equal to an assessment payment for that property. If you did that, given the current remaining assessment benefit for an R1 of about $9,800, and it'll go down every year because you're going to have to subtract however much you took away, but after 10 or 12 years, you don't have any more to draw out on. You don't have any more money in that pot to help offset the assessments. So here again, you've got everybody else out here paying assessments, but these folks that paid off early aren't paying anything. So you've shifted the burden to every other property owner out here by allowing this to occur. It's not in the favor of the property owners. And I think that's what I want you to remember. I don't think, it's not fair to do that to the other property owners. And like I said, if you look at those statutes and look at our statute, it's clear, it says it's to be paid in annual assessments. I don't know how you could get any clearer. So anyway, I'm strongly opposed to pay, allowing payoff of this, and I urge your vote to say no on it. And also, yeah, some people out here, the last paragraph I said, some people out here, you know, suggest that just because an early payoff of the AOB was in the settlement, which Mr. Hutchinson came up with, of course, they have to pay, you know, he's going to allow, he made Cherokee Village allow early payments, which is detrimental, again, more so to their property owners who are already going to suffer enormous consequences from that lawsuit on their property. Their property value is absolutely worth crap. It's worth nothing because of that lawsuit. Those four people have lost their total value of their properties as a result of that lawsuit, and he should be ashamed. So anyway, and just because it's a Cherokee Village lawsuit settlement does not mean it applies anywhere, any way to Holiday Island.
Now, let me be clear, Linda. The Cherokee Village lawsuit, which none of us have seen the settlement agreement yet.
I can provide you a copy.
Well, it hasn't been penned yet.
It's on the internet. I mean, it's not filed, but the preliminary one is.
That's it. That is not what prompted this discussion.
Yeah, I agree. I'm sure it isn't.
What prompted this discussion, and a discussion is all it is today, is this is, as I travel throughout the community and all of you who know me, I, I meet with a lot of people on a daily basis, it seems like, and have these kind of conversations. And to a person almost, nix the potholes, paying off the AOB is the number one topic of conversation. And so...
How many people have brought to that table?
I can't...
Five?
Oh, my gosh, no, lots of people.
They really want to pay off $10,000?
No, they just want to know why they can't.
Oh, okay.
I, I don't know how many people would actually act upon this. And by the way, I think this is a little unfair to allow anybody to pay it off because it gives the people with money an advantage over people who might not have the resources, who are on a fixed income. They are disadvantaged by the prospect. And it, as I said earlier, it raises a lot of questions in my mind about ongoing maintenance and those kinds of things, you know. Unanswered questions. Ultimately, as a board member, as long as I'm a board member, even though I won't be the chairman after another month. I would look to this board to, to ask the attorney or a judge's opinion on this, not, not for just an attorney's opinion. Tim Hutchinson told Danny and I that the law is unclear. It is neither for or against in the law. It does not spell out whether you should be able to or you should not be able to. So again...
It can be argued either way.
It can be argued either way, and goes with the wind. But because of the, the interest amongst the property owners here at Holiday Island, that's why Danny and I have pursued this and are looking, you know, in our agenda, it says assessment of benefit payoff discussion and consideration. It doesn't say we're going to vote on anything.
I applaud you for having the discussion.
Yeah.
Thank you, and I applaud you for your work and understanding of this.
May I make a comment?
Let's, let Mr. Stamps push, and then you can...
First of all, that the assessments of benefits, let's get down to that. In the very beginning of how the Holiday Island Suburban Improvement District was set up and assessments were charged was based upon $7,290,000, which was the bond indebtedness that was authorized at the beginning of the suburban improvement district. Okay, you had, okay, if you drill a well, that's going to benefit everyone. At that point in time, we had phase one and phase two of Holiday Island. Unit 12, Indian Country, I call it, was phase two. There was a lot of phase two in the island was phase two. They use that. It's just exactly the same reasoning that Carroll County gives you taxes on your personal property, on your real estate. And they sit down and say, okay, your house is now worth $100,000. That was 10 years ago. Now they come along and say, your house is now worth $200,000. Doesn't mean you got to pay for that house again. I could go over here to Clay Mac and say, buy me a Ford car and pay cash for it. Does that mean I don't have to put gas in it? No. You still, it's a, the assessment of benefits is merely an equation on how to pass out the money that's required to run the district. It's not saying that your lot has got $10,221 worth of assessments, and his lot's only got $9,221 worth. That's not the case. It's a means in which everybody can proportionately shagger in what is required to run the district. It doesn't, it doesn't mean that you can come along and say, okay, I want to pay that off, and I don't have to pay you. That's not what this is about. It, surely, we don't owe that amount of money. The district doesn't owe that amount of money that's being assessed to everybody. It's a, it is nothing more than an equation of equity. That's all it is.
I would agree, sir.
I will not put it in.
You're here for a reason.
You know, my concern, and I will say upfront, the whole concept of assessment of benefits is the most foreign animal that anyone has ever run across. Because most of us... is the most foreign animal that anyone has ever run across because most of us are used to property taxes and all of that kind of thing. But the bottom line is, it takes money to run Holiday Island. We have a 4 million dollar budget, and if people start paying off their assessment where we're not getting the money that we need to run Holiday Island, what they will in effect be doing is make it impossible for us to provide services. I think I told you just a little while ago, we could double our assessment and not be able to pave all the roads that need to be repaired and do all the things to the water department and the sewer department that need to be done in terms of capital outlay. So if we're going to, you're going to pay off your assessment, it's going to reduce the amount of income that Holiday Island has to work with. It's going to be infinitely unfair to people. There you said, people with money would pay it off, and the people who can't are putting the bill. You know, I think you're kind of damned if you do, damned if you don't. If I was a property owner who was having to pay it, I might sue because those guys were not putting in their fair share. So I, I just, I, it's a real basket of worms, but the bottom line is, there's no free lunch anywhere. You have to pay for services that you want in a community. Most communities have huge retail establishments, and cities can pass sales tax, and they can live off of the sales taxes that residents pay. We don't have that. We're a very small community. You know, I never have met anybody of a born race in Holiday Island. We all moved here because we looked around and we said, that's a great place to live. You know, look at the green space, the lake, the swimming pools, the marinas. But you know what? It all has to be paid for, and it all has to be continued to be paid for. I mean, I have seen water wells that need serious work on them right now. We have 50-year-old infrastructure that in many cases was built as cheaply as possible. The water lines didn't have the base put below them to support them, and so 50-year-old pipes are breaking, which are affecting the streets because the streets were not built properly. They didn't have the base to, so there's just tons that needs to be done. But reducing the amount of money that comes to Holiday Island is not going to solve those problems. It's not going to get those potholes fixed. You know, we listened two months ago to the road department say that to repair the water lines and fix the streets costs almost a million dollars a mile, a mile. We have, what, 72 miles of roads? You know, now, not all of them need to be that kind of seriously maintained, but even the ones that we do need to repair to that point, we can't afford to do. Not at this point, so.
That's some very good conversation. Mayor Keez, do you have another sports analogy?
(laughing).
No.
Or at least give us some love.
No more sports analogies, just one, one technical point. Somewhere in the code, there's a statement that says that as long as the district has bonded indebtedness, the assessed benefit cannot be diminished. I don't know what that means, but you better understand that, you know, when it comes to letting people pay off their assessed benefit or something like that. If I were the bondholder and I knew that the bond payments were coming out of the assessments, the annual assessments, and I heard that you were going to let people pay it off ahead of time, I would be first in line to say, you must take whatever portion of that payoff was going to go towards the bond and put it in a reserve so that the bond gets satisfied first and not, not just eliminate your ability to service the bond.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Well, we've had some, some very good conversations, a lot of strong input and various opinions, which I applaud. I think we could all agree to one thing, though, that this matter needs much more study and additional conversations. You know, I'm not in a position to say no to anything, but likewise, I'm far from being in a position to say yes at this time. And, you know, out of respect for the residents of Holiday Island, I think we need to ask the district manager to continue to investigate this matter and now that we do have a relationship with a, what I would call an attorney with great expertise in the area of suburban improvement districts, you know, ask him to do his life work as well, not, not his personal opinion. So if everyone's agreed to that.
Danny, have we had any property owner come in and ask your staff to accept a check for the total assessment of its payment?
That's true. Good.
We have had in the past.
It has.
Yeah.
Good.
Is there any disagreement with us tabling this matter and moving on? I will do so then. The 12th item on our agenda is a second opportunity for any citizens that have public comments. Again, a three-minute limit, please, and please don't expect us to answer your questions here today, but we will take them very seriously. Anybody out there on the interweb?
If, I have one. I don't see it.
I have a question. Carl, when we get a question, do we get, do you ask the chair to read the question or from the Zoom audience or?
I generally read it, but if the chair should read it, it's up there, so I can stop talking, say it.
My eyes are good.
Did you find it, Carl?
No, I don't.
Okay. In the meantime, Brian, you want?
Here it is.
Okay, just a minute, Brian.
It's, I'm sorry, it was Butch Phillips and it was, I guess, okay. I don't see his comment, so. All right.
Brian.
This is a moral question. I'm not sure if you can answer this or not, but once again, Brian Tagaway Pharaoh. With Phil Callison's removal, does that mean there's going to be three votes or three openings for the nomination tonight? Do I enter that?
No.
It will not be?
No. Mr. Callison's seat was, he was appointed as a fill-in when Mayor Keez left the commission.
Okay.
And there is, that, that, that seat now, at the beginning, the first of December, will have completed that three-year term. So one, one person tonight will be, from the nominees, will be voted for that seat, and then Mr. Stamps is filling another vacant seat that occurred when we lost another commission member, when he resigned. There will be one year remaining on that seat. So we'll need two seats filled from the nominees that are made tonight and voted on December 3rd, because of the election. Great question.
Thank you. I plan on nominating myself as the board tonight. Appreciate it. Do you all have any concerns, comments? I am more than willing to answer and to discuss what we've talked about today. I've given my opinions thus far, and all I've seen from this meeting today is reaffirmation that dissolution of ICID needs to happen as quickly as possible.
Okay. Thank you. Any commissioner comments? Hearing none?
I think I've said none.
Are you suffering from dry mouth?
I would be, yes.
Our next regular meeting for November, the date is?
Fifteenth of the week.
The 15th?
The week is correct. Yep.
The next regular meeting will be December, or November 15th, 2021. This is budget season. We'll be conducting a workshop shortly after the close of this meeting today in preparation for budget planning, and I think the district manager told me that we'll have two meetings probably in November to actually work our way through the budget in preparation for improvement.
In the past years, we've had at least two extra, or special meetings for budget, and probably late November, or before the December meeting, rather with approved budget, so that the new board gets to go forward with their own budget.
That said, I would accept the motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion. Do we adjourn? Sorry.
Motion been made by Commissioner Stamps, seconded by Commissioner Brown. That will be adjourned. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, folks.
Good work.
Yeah, so.
John, how are you?
Good, I'm doing good. How are you?
I'm good.
I do. It's got more in me and mine on it. It's, here, I mean. My goodness. That's fine.
I'll see y'all later.
Your parents were.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
I knew I would retire here. I've been applying to the grant for 2,000,000. Yeah, you were doing mine earlier.
That was great. And all I can say is, we don't have these problems.
How long?
Oh, you're so full, I bet.
Were you, I wasn't expecting that, and I was.
Boy, this guy's told me three times. Maybe more than that.
Your job was safety. We better check your message. We'll walk around with it.
Hope Facebook is turning into the wild, wild west now.
It will be honest.
Oh, we've got the wash face.
They lose their page. Help them.
You know, I do not.
Somebody asked, could be the administrative.
He, he was putting out, this virtue. It's all relative.
Thank you for the information about the interlopals. I didn't know that.
I'm sorry, I, if I cited the wrong.
There's no support for what you did. I mean, she knows COVID better than anyone around here in Washington.
Thanks to, I've been told that before.
Thanks to the dish house, we all know a lot more about our concern.
But it is, it is, you know, the law is always the lawyer's interpretation, but that's his job to argue his interpretation of the law.
And you can, you can have the same kind, argue both sides.
Suburban improvement, suburban laws are the most convoluted name that, you know, some of this stuff, we will just back down. We didn't work for the justice. I did, but. Yeah. Oh, yeah, I saw. I was checking that. I couldn't, and even, I just have the, you know, the, when you go fishing.
Well, I can go through that. Don't feel like you're on the wrong side. When I saw my question.
Always the same people. He's going to get it.
Allowing a free one for you. Yes. So, I'm staying.
Yeah, you're doing another meeting now, right?
Yeah, we worked out.
Hi, Ben Dr. Brown?
Good, how are you, sir?
Okay.
As soon as I really arrest you, we'd lock you every day.
Yeah, not every day, but a couple of times a week anyway.
You're doing better than that. I've been trying to do this.
It's hard, and we can't, oh, he's just going to die.
Whenever you guys are losing, I'm fine. Although we have a dog again now, so I'm happy getting one.
I made your wife the other day when I was walking down, she hit that guy. We stepped up for it.
Big hand.
You're going to be here tonight with your wife, right? Is she going to know?
All three of our dogs had it at one time or another. Our oldest daughter, we had her pup, she had her woman retriever, same pool, and she pulled all the fuss with one, and one of my youngest daughter, and my youngest daughter tore up her knee, so she was in a, from a break from her hip to her foot, and put it in the hospital, being a pussy, so our middle daughter took it, and it took him until he got to be 80 pounds, and she couldn't lift it. So we ended up with a previous to our dog. He's still got a little bit of puppy shy to him, but generally speaking, he's, he's pretty, you know, he's pretty good. He needs a haircut.
And several of them.
Two of them are the same age.
Oh, yeah. I know you.
How are you? Are you? I'm good. Right, I'm mission to stay there. Thank you. We never do.
Sure.
Believe me, this was exciting.
Lots of good comments, you know, about your background. Just read the, you know, the, this one.
Did you say you didn't stay here? Oh, my.
Who definitely said that?
No, I think.
Well, that's what I just heard. What was the issue?
He claimed on Facebook. Basically, really, so, really, it was because of that, was what he implied. You can see it, but you've got to go directly to the two pages we're looking at. I'll show you how to do it. And the reason was not going with Dan.
You know what?
Dead key.
Dead case.
You know what?
More of the bombshell. For you to.
That's, that's.
Didn't three seventy-two artists?
Yeah, Toronto, they said.
You got a bombshell just passed.
Yes. I understand what's happened, I don't think it was compared to. Well, they say. I, I just. My business was there. I don't, fortunately for me, I don't have a lot. Yeah, but it was.
Well, personal, I'm insured for. He's not up there talking to me.
Yeah, I know, we have a prescription of. That's, and I do, you know, last week I went in and I woke up with a. Irritation. And I said, I need you. And he said, well, it was a product called Style, it was a back issue, he's an obstacle to. And I said, okay, and he says, go home and. As hot as you can stand and wash it. About four times a day. And you have the next one.
I think he's got.
And that's fine, my, my husband, a monkey is a little. So I was used to having that in the house. And it's on, so, oh, I like to be there.
Well, my brother.
Wasn't that fun?
Don't get. Doctor.
Thank you.
Just go home. And say, well.
You know what?
I said, I wonder why.
And you said, number ten.
Number ten. You're in a hard place. With respect. Not brothers. You ready? We're ready. Right.
Ever, ever, ever. He don't have a clue, and he's one of these guys.
He's hiding too. Is that what we're gonna have?
I have no idea.
I love your solution.
Yes, it does, that's the same thing.
The first two pages are about the budget. All right, I don't do power fires. No, that's okay, that's okay. You do appreciate something, you're right. Go back and digest. Well, yeah, because there's a lot at home that you have to consider, the two, first you painted the budget, but it kind of.
I saw this issue the other night at the Chamber of Commerce. They have that for their own laws, my creations.
I don't know if I tell us.
Yeah, but I want you to know it's. It's terribly inaccurate. It's terribly inaccurate, it's a bad presentation, we just for years and then one or two years. But it was last year, new reviews. I haven't been able to enter complete needs. I never been able to deal with new sales. I'm sure stake lands on the job. I have been able to get on new sales.
There's like, there were like. You're, uh, you're.
That's a bad. So if you go to review. Somebody asks you about that, you know, say you can look at it, it's not. I never been able to do anything with it.
I saw virtually no good.
Yeah, I'll tell you my.
Also, though, I heard the Bermuda grass.
Sure. I totally got to eventually.
Pollen.
But there are a couple of experimental, uh, the best.
I got down there on college, I was in the.
So, please don't.
In the past years.
Okay.
Because I've been working.
Oh, please, let's see, I don't think. I think maybe I had the, you know, I had an internship in way pre-merch and application. I don't think they got the correct rate. First couple of days, then I was here with the third one. Check out a couple of bad.
Maybe even walking too fast, you know, too far apart.
Recording in progress.
Spreader was getting clogged and weren't checking.
Well, for personal. You know, good ground coverage, what you did, you had what it looked like.
Goosebumps.
Yeah. Little cover. Loves, uh, competition. Loves ability.
We're probably seeing our last. While this trailer is.
Yeah, my stop, my stop.
They got a little, they're a little hairy now, but. If they miss, oh, there you go.
There used to be a time.
Mr. Carl. Are we, ready to go, sir?
He's becoming a pro on that. He didn't hear me.
Oh, yeah. We didn't have an agenda for our work session, but anyway. It is. It is approximately eleven fifteen AM on Monday, October eighteen, twenty twenty-one. And I call the order of this meeting, a special workshop meeting of the Holiday Island Suburban Improvement District Board of Commissioners. And, uh, today, we're gonna have some new discussion topics that we haven't talked about yet in our preparation for the twenty twenty-two budget. That being the operations of the rec center, the golf course maintenance operations, and the clubhouse operations, the campground, and the marina. And I will say that I've been informed that Colin Pulp, uh, the, um, marina leaseholder is on Zoom. And will be available for his part via Zoom, so, uh, let's kick this off and, Mr. Presley, would you please lead us in our discussions?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. So this will be our last round of, uh, of work sessions prior to actually, uh, putting together the budget. Uh, you know, we've covered roads and, and water and, um, then we had fire and then our sheriff's contract. And then now we do these other amenities as, as the chairman mentioned. And we just want to hear from, from each of you about what your needs are, uh, whatever outliers that you have coming up in twenty twenty-two, capital items, salary and so forth. And, uh, and then, uh, I, I believe the board is aware of this, but on Monday and Tuesday, October the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, we will have all-day work sessions. Uh, with me and, and all of the, uh, department heads.
Not board members, though.
Not, not board members. It'll be just me and the department heads, Carl, uh, our accounting consultant. And, uh, we will actually start, we'll have some pretty good revenue projections by then, and we'll actually start, uh, building the budget in some. I would say, uh, a week and a half to two weeks from now, we'll have something that we can submit to the board for your review. And I believe we ought to go in order here, so, uh, Janice, we'll start with you. If you'll, come up to the table if you don't mind and.
Up to the table?
Sure.
This, this can be very informal, Janice, but.
Okay. I'm gonna sit in the easy seat. I'm supposed to be comfortable.
The mic, the microphone is.
See, the, the mic's out there.
I have to sit over here.
No, 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 no.
You're fine, you're fine.
I'll just talk that.
Talk that.
I got a pretty loud voice anyway, so I think everybody can hear me.
Yeah, I'm in the pool.
Okay. Where do I begin with the rec center? I mean, let's go from A to Z. Um, the first two pages, I think, there. Yes?
I need for you to, uh, say your.
Oh.
Name and address when you're speaking, just for the record.
Okay. My, my home address?
You can use your work address.
Work address, okay. My name is Janice Murphy, I work at the Recreation Center, which is thirteen Buckskin Lane, but I also live at seven Hillcrest Drive in Holiday Island. Thank you. You're welcome. Okay, so what I gave to you is a bunch of written stuff. Um, but the considerations for the budget was the first sheet and then the CIP, I believe, was below it. Um, looking at the, the thing from last year. I haven't got the most current one, this one, I'm trying to remember when it was from, what we've used up before, but I know that we will have to increase the chemicals for the pools. Providing we open both pools this coming season. And the reason for that is, um, the prices have gone up dramatically for chlorine and plus the other chemicals. There was a factory somewhere down south of here, another state somewhere.
In Texas.
In Texas, wasn't it, that blew up and burned to the ground, so the production of chlorine has become, or any chemicals for pools, has become very, very hard to find. I know I purchased some online, um, through, in the swim, and I think at that time, they were fifty dollars more a bucket for the fifty pounds, or the, the things that we get fifty pounds. And then, um, through our supplier here, Richard, who some people say, you know, argue that we should all go online for everything because he's so much higher, not that much higher. The value we get from Richard for the help he gives Kim for the pools is invaluable, you can't get that online. So I really, I bought some through Into Swim because he couldn't get it at the time, but now he has been able to supply with stuff. We still have, I think I still have two thousand some dollars left in that budget, which we're working on now, because what we do, it's got shelf life, so we can buy it at the end of the year. And then we treat the pools through the winter, and then when we come to the spring, we start again, and we have the, we have the chemicals to begin with at the start. So that's why we're looking at, you know, finishing off that budget part this year. But because of the fact that chemicals have come up in price, I'm looking to go from the four thousand we have, um, budgeted for last year to at least five thousand this year, just to be safe. That was one of my requests for that. Okay, the other budget consideration is increase the parts and maintenance from two to three thousand. Costs for repairs are going up and happening more and more with what we have at the rec center, you know, to, you never know what's gonna happen down there. So parts and maintenance, um, just to be on the safe side to do that, too. Building maintenance, okay, this is a biggie. I'm not even, I have not put in this budget anywhere what that building might be. I, I, that's not in this budget, because that's not part of this, but, um, we have right now, what was my building budget? Building maintenance was eight, uh, it was only five, five thousand, no, three thou, three thousand. They gave us three thousand. In twenty twenty, I had five thousand. Then come twenty twenty-one, which of course was pandem and all that kind of stuff, it went down to three thousand. Well, this year, so far, according to this one, which was done, I can't remember when we got this sheet here, but we were already in the negative by two thousand. And, and we had a bad winter, pipes broke, flooded crawl space, electricity, pipes had to be fixed and all that kind of stuff, so we went over at that point. Then, during our July second festival, we had an issue at the barn with plumbing, and I think some people were there. Well, we had closed the barn down for a while, I finally got a couple of, of person from Monette to come out and dig it up and found out that a whole pipe, I don't know if you knew this, whole pipe on the outside, right at the outside of the building, thank God it was on the outside of the building. Was broken through by roots from. They had to come out and dig that whole side up and replace all that pipe, when the process, they broke through a water pipe, which they fixed, everything is fixed now, but they had to bring out equipment to do that, three men were there. I called this man back several times, they still haven't got the bill, and he's such a nice guy, he's up in, in Monette. And we talk and talk and talk, and I said, you gotta get me this bill, it gotta be paid before the end of the year, you know? Oh, yeah, I'm gonna get to that level, okay, so, and it's a good company, I've had them before out there for the barn, but anyway, that was got fixed, I don't have that bill yet. I called, um, when they were there repairing it, I called Dan, the man from the water department, he came down and he saw what they were doing, but it was way beyond what he could do. So one of the meetings we're at, I said, I have a bet with Kim, I said, I'm saying five thousand, she's saying six, and he's saying, oh, and I'm like, so, I don't know what that bill's gonna be. So as you can see, the rec center, building, the barn, the island room, the pavilion, that's all what's in this one budget for building maintenance. And you never know what's gonna happen in these buildings.
Janice, the, uh, painting of the restroom and so forth and the new roof, no, no, that wasn't in this budget, right?
No, no, that was, that was already way beyond, that was, actually, that was under, um, the capital improvements that we had done, but we already had, that was all done already, no. I had just recently, before we were, we had to move out of the rec center, I had called, um, an electric, like, all of our lights in that main room of the rec center were just not working. They were, so I had, had to come out to replace all the LEDs, but then I called them and said, hold off, because, you know, we don't know what we're gonna do with the building yet, so that, there's no other outstanding bills that I'm waiting for at all, other than that thing at the barn. So, you know, I, I don't think going to eight thousand for those buildings is outrageous as far as not knowing what's gonna happen. Some years, we don't use it at all, because everything goes smoothly, and then doesn't a year like last year, we got slapped with everything, so, um, but that's one of the things, um. Oh, and I, well, and this is, I can bring it up now, I suppose. Kim, our, our, her cart, she has a utility cart that she goes around picks up, I mean, it's, it's used all the time, she has to have this to cart debris and garbage and you name it. Well, for the last month, it's been really falling apart, and I've contacted, uh, John, and then I've talked to Kenny, they came out and changed up filters and stuff, and it's still not working correctly. Now, in this budget from this year, we had a, um, capital or capital improvement part of this last, this budget we're in right now, was to get another mower for down there. Because hers goes out, we need another mower, it, but, you know, we only have one person, which is Kim, so she's the only one that's going around mowing anything anyway. So I looked at this five thousand and I know I can't get a mower, I mean, at this time of year, I'm not gonna go for a mower, but I've been making inquiries to use that five thousand, not for the mower, but for a new utility cart, or a used utility cart. I have contacted, um, I think the Rogers place that has golf carts, and he had. Cross Creek, yeah.
Clear Creek.
Clear Creek.
Clear Creek.
Somewhere like that, yeah, and he has one that he's lent out to a golf course right now, but it will be coming back sometime in November. I think he said it, it was a two thousand, I can't remember if I have it in here or not, maybe I left it at work. Um, two thousand and nine, uh, something, but it had a big bed on the back, and I said, does it work, you know, is it running well? And he says, yeah, I said, it's been their maintenance stuff. So he's gonna tell me when he comes back, and he said it's probably like forty-nine hundred. But I will get more information on that as it comes back in, and if we can use that money towards it, you know, I'd like to see her have a better cart, because without the proper tools, she can't do anything anyway. You know, it's hard enough that it's just one person, but, you know, it's hard to pick up twigs and stuff before you're gonna mow, and then you have no place. She's been using our golf carts, but that's not good either. So that was just one of the things that. Is it possible to lease that? You could, you could lease it, I think, and, but John said he wasn't gonna look to leasing those kinda carts until a couple of years or something, right?
Yeah, well, my just standard golf carts with beds on them, I don't have to, to replace for, I think, two more years.
Right. But those aren't.
That, that doesn't mean that you can't lease, you certainly can't lease these, these carts, yep.
But the, your utility carts are leased?
Uh, no.
No?
They really aren't.
No, okay. And we got, this cart that Kim has, we got somehow from the roads department a couple of years ago. I, I don't know what she's gonna put together that way.
Is that a, Lauren, is that a special type of cart with the, like, the bed on the back?
It's a four-wheel drive cart.
It's a four-wheel drive utility vehicle, fully automatic, and it's a hundred and sixty-two dollars a month for a lease.
Okay.
What does it look like? It's a lot of the box. Oh, okay.
I don't, I don't think she means four-wheel drive.
No, she's four-wheel drive, no, we're not.
I will say that, that club car, that, that Clear Creek is trying to sell her, these carry altercues, I have experience with them, they're, they're really good carts. I mean, it's got a, it's got a nice utility dump bed on it, it's nothing fancy, but it's what she means.
Right, yeah.
Do you have, do you have a quote on that from that?
From Clear Creek, he said forty-nine hundred for, well, to buy it, it's a, it's a used one for forty-nine hundred. That's, and he's, I, he's got my name and phone number, and I'll get back with him sometime beginning in November, because he said he should be getting it back from the golf course he lent it to, because they were waiting for parts for their cart, so.
I had a question for John. Once you lease basic equipment, like we, you are doing now, a lot of your equipment, is there like a year warranty, what if totally goes out, if we were to replace one of these? Tell me about that.
Uh, yeah, there's definitely warranties on the lease items, you know, that we're responsible for the maintenance, but if anything, you know, goes wrong out of the ordinary, they'll cover it on, on a lease. I don't know what they would do on a used club car that they would be selling her, it would be something they'd have to discuss. I will say that for, you know, would you say it was two thousand thirteen?
I think nine or thirteen.
Oh, two thousand nine, you know, forty-nine hundred seems on the high end for, for a used cart purchase, I, you know, but if it's being, been there at Clear Creek and been being maintained by them, I feel pretty confident that's, you know, it'll run for quite a while.
Same, we only have one mechanic at the shops that takes care of the rec center and everybody.
Right.
I would definitely look into leasing one, brand-new, hundred, even if it was less than a hundred and sixty-two, because it'd be two-wheel drive, it might be a possibility.
Well, that might be a possibility, too. Well, and golf carts seem to have an inordinate long life in Holiday Island, but if it's a two thousand and nine, that also kinda worries me that it's that old, so, you know? I can keep, keep looking, it's very, I called a couple of places, and one place had some, but they were electric, and, nah, that wouldn't work out too well. Yeah. Then this other place, in, I think it was in Hollister, they were getting back, some carts were coming in, they could put a bed on it, they said, but theirs were like fifty-five hundred, used, you know, at that point, so, you know, but, yeah, maybe, maybe one on a lease would be. I know you're trying to live within your budget. Yeah. But my experience is, go for what's gonna work the best, the longest, and we'll figure out how to make the money work.
Yeah.
Well, that's my wish list there for that.
I can inquire with my vendors as well. I don't know who the, I deal with Toro and John Deere and Jacobson, I'm sure that they are either carry club cars or Easy Goes, and I can trust them.
I don't wanna jump the gun, but I'm, I'm proposing that we get more golf carts, and in that, the utility vehicle is part of my proposal, so if, if that's something that could fall underneath that umbrella, then why not go that route, too? You know what I mean? So.
Are those, I'm sure they're Yamahas, then.
Well, I have a proposal from both Yamaha or club car. Either one, I have a proposal from both. The Yamaha proposal's incomplete, I just have for the golf carts, how they didn't get numbers to me for their utility vehicles, but I assume they're relatively in line. I think the Yamaha might be more expensive than club car in general, as far as golf carts and utility vehicles, but that's what the numbers reflect on the proposals anyway, so I can't speak on the utility cart specifically, but.
Are the golf carts, are they leased?
They are.
They are?
It's a five-year lease. I believe the lease comes to term next year, in twenty twenty-two.
That's, that's, Larry, that's pretty much the norm for golf courses throughout the country, is to lease equipment.
Most of that?
At least the.
That's all involved?
Yeah, it's much more.
A lot of times you could, you can, well, with club car, Alan, I was probably at a disadvantage, because I, I was about that far from Augusta, Georgia, and that's where they're made. And we furnished club car on our golf courses there, and they were, of course, right down the street from them was Easy Go, and so they were very competitive, and they were very eager to throw in utility carts.
It's perhaps something to be negotiated, negotiated, I can't promise, but.
Yeah, that works interesting.
Things to consider, Janice.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Good discussion.
Yeah. Okay, and then food and beverage, well, it will, a lot will depend on where we are at the start of the season, or even in the spring, or whatever. We are limited with space at the island room, we have one little refrigerator over there, so we got water in there and whatever pot we had left if somebody wanted to buy it. But historically, at this time of year, it's not that big of an issue. If we are back at the rec center and everything is back to normal, which is a big if at this point, we may need to increase the beverage and food up just by a hundred dollars for each thing. I think I had, beverage, I think we're both at seven, seven fifty and seven hundred for the twenty-one budget. I stayed under that, I know I stayed under that, but, you know, you know, last year or this year, I should say, we saw an increase in people being there, so by next year, I'm sure that the increase will continue, I would think, with everything, you know, becoming kind of controllable. So that was just another thing I was looking at, to do that, just to have that push in there. And then, of course, as we all know, state of Arkansas, the minimum wage is increasing next year. So we have the seasonal help that comes in at the rec center, they're all the minimum wage, so we know that they're gonna have to go up to whatever the minimum wage is, and then, you know, so I leave that part up to you guys. I don't, I usually, I try to get Kim, it'd be nice if I get her like two seasonal help people to help around there, and I have one, two, three, the three that comes back, between me and Paulette, and three that come back for seasonal help. So it's not a huge budget, but, you know, we've been able to work it out. And there's more information in that packet I gave you about suggestions and stuff for next year, which in some ways, you know, keeps everything kind of worth at, that's for different reading time, I guess. That's, I just love typing, anyway. So, capital improvement, well, the rec center, I don't know what to tell you, I gave you a capital improvement list here, because this is really what we need, whether we're gonna be able to get it, but I'm just telling you what is there that happens to happen. Well, a wall, some of you remember the racketball wall that was down there, because I remember there was a wall that went like this down by the mini golf area, okay? Well, this past year, during one of the major windstorms, it took it down. It took it down, part of it and one whole side, and took out stuff at the tennis courts and stuff, but the wall had to be demolished, it had to come down, you couldn't leave it up there. So unfortunately, when it got demolished, we're kind of pushed, and just kind of broke up all these cinder blocks, and then threw them down this little hill, and then thought they could cover it over with dirt or make it, we used it for a burning place, okay? The rec center doesn't have any areas that's safe to burn, but that was where the biggest burning safety was. Well, we've tried at the barn, we've tried there on the slab that's left there, but unfortunately, the wind comes whipping down there, and it's very unsafe to burn, so I would like to see some kind of a wall rebuilt. It doesn't have to be as big as that was, it could be six foot by six foot, so tall, but she could put the stuff in there and be safe about burning twigs and grasses and all that stuff that we have to get rid of. I know this past year, when it happened, I did get a quote from Anthony to build one that wasn't quite as big as the other one, and then I kinda cut it down, but his quote could be anywhere between five to seven thousand to build a wall of some sort. Whether somebody else, unfortunately, we couldn't, we didn't get there fast enough to get some of the brick before they crushed it up, because I didn't even know what they were doing, and so we couldn't just, you know, use more of those bricks to make a wall, because they were all crushed up and gone, so that's one of the things on the wish list. I'm looking like that for maybe for two thousand and twenty-two to do something with that. Pool winter covers for both pools, and that is a, I've got a quote for this year, the pool covers that we have on right now have holes in them, things have been falling on them, they've got holes here and there, leaves get underneath there, they can still get them on, there's no question about it, because they're on both of the pools now, but they are in need of being replaced. I did get a quote from both of them, seventeen thousand dollars, and what you have to do is, this company is an online company, and you would send, they send you the box and stuff, to send your old, your old covers back to them. They pay for that all up front, you know, it's all free, free thing, because they have to take and do it the same exact way. We have, we have a rectangle pool, but the other one is kinda odd shape. So these quotes are based on what I could draw out and tell them what was there, and so, you know, roughly about seventeen, this is the price for this year, seventeen thousand dollars for both pools, if we choose to get them.
Does that include shipping them?
Yes, and that, we have to ship the old ones back. And ship? And then, yeah, they send, they, they send a box and everything, because where you have, where you have the straps.
Right.
They have to make them exactly right, so that they can rehook to the, to the surface of the thing. So that's one of the big things on the wish list. Another one, which is the real kicker, is to resurface the pool deck. Anybody's been down there around the big pool? I think it was in two thousand and six, it was before I got there, they had that pool redone with rubber rock. Rubber rock, rubber rock, little, little balls of rubber, and they kinda mix it, and then they spread it all out, and it makes this safety surface, and we had, our logo was sitting there and everything else. Well, over the years, unfortunately, over the years, there was a maintenance to be done to that, and of course, over the years, we have never had really a maintenance department, though I said retired people who just have to come down there, Chuck was one, Ed was one, and the maintenance of that rubber rock really was never done. Probably should have had a company come in and do it, because it consisted of putting another coat on it to seal it over the years, because the sun has destroyed it, it really has destroyed it. In the places where the sun doesn't get it under the cover thing, you know, it's perfectly okay, it's perfectly okay, I don't care, but it's all around the pool, between the chlorine and the sun has completely destroyed most of this. I did get ahold of a company who, at first, he says, well, maybe we could, you know, I mean, just repair it, you know, and I'm like, yes, let's talk about repairing, but when he saw the pictures I sent him of all of the problems, he said, if it's more than twenty percent over the size of your pool, he says, you, you really can't rerepair it, it has to be a complete, you know, a redone job again. So his company was called Aqua Seal, and did a really good job, you know? Oh, and the company that put the covers called Mighty Covers from online. So we have that, you know, have two different ways you can do it. The numbers. Well, you know, for them to come in and remove it, okay, remove everything that's there, that cost is twenty thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars, based on the size of the pool, which, you know, we've had completely drawn out for him here. And that's just around the pool, that is not going to the parts that isn't bad, that's just the pool area, and then where they walk in and stuff, it's still okay, we'd be that well. So that's just the tear-off, and you can go two different ways, they gave me total, a cost for two different one. One was a one-year warranty, and that total is ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars. Or a three-year warranty, and you're looking at a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars. Nothing is cheap. It's, it's very expensive. So you put those two together, and it's anywhere between a hundred, say a hundred and eighteen thousand or a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars for that pool surface. And at this point, I don't know what another option would be, because it's just too much around the pool, there isn't a, a chance to kind of catch it, but those are big numbers.
Janice, when you have your pool inspected, do they look at things like that?
No, they, basically, when they come out, they just look at the, you know, the pumps are running, the chemicals, they're not gonna tell you, oh, you can't open the pool because of this or that, they, they don't seem to worry about that, but there, it just becomes, it becomes, it becomes a problem, because the little balls are in the pool. They, they get on people's feet, and so they're in the pool, now you're vacuuming them up. They are going into the pumps, we have these big sand pumps, like five of them in that big group. Whether or not eventually they're gonna do some damage to the pumps, I don't know, it's just a sand, you know, it's a big sand filter. So far, we haven't had that problem.
Your knowledge is that the deck that's on it now, they're a distance from the pool we built?
No, two thousand and six was when they put that rubber rock in. And then, ah, many years ago, we did the, remember we did the pool, we had the whole inside of the pool redone and, and rethings, that was, I was still there, that's about five, six years ago, I guess, and we had the top parts of coping done, but we didn't do anything with the surface at that time, you know? But that's, and it's my understanding that that pool is inside another pool, you might remember that. No? The pool was, was much bigger than this, it had diving boards?
We had diving boards all right, but the liability got so, so much that I took them down.